Nita, Councilor Lorenz will lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the breathing and just as for all.
Nita, could you call it first? Councilor Lorenz?
Here.
Councilor Schreiber?
Here.
Council Martinez?
Here.
Council Schrader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
The floor is declared. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Council Schrader? Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Council Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries? Thank you. Moving on to proclamations, communications, and appointments. First item we have this evening is some outstanding service awards. Chief, we'll turn it over. Chief?
All right. I'd like to have Robbie and Brian and who was it? Pete. One more. We've got two things that I want to promote. Sergeant Bobby Martinez, the sergeant, he came out number one in a process that actually extended clear to, well, a guy that lived in Elizabeth for a while, lived in Santa Fe for a while, kind of all over, but extended to the metro area. So there was local candidates, went all the way across the kind of north, southern metro area and came out number one, did a great job, represented himself and the department and community very well. So we're happy to not only keep him and promote him, but to have the best candidate, a pretty good pool of applicants. So we're going to do that. And then we have the service awards. So this is, this is pretty cool. So on the Facebook page, it's the kind of a local community awareness page. This was put out. Need some help. My son's grandpa, who is a veteran, got a screen door to put on the back door. Well, our power tools don't work and we can't lift too much. Is there someone who could help us put this door on? It would be great. Please let me know. This email kind of came later. Well, about an hour later, our doorbell rang and three Montevista Police Department officers showed up to say they were here to help us put on a new screen door. We feel the following officers need to be honored and their random act of kindness is amazing. I was so shocked to see the officers show up to do this for our family. I was overwhelmed with their active kindness and that I was in tears. I think that's pretty cool. Signed, Pete of the Beale, Mahana, and the Beale family. I want to thank you. With that, the city would also like to thank you with some outstanding community service awards. Very much appreciated. All right. Brian, all in the same, I think, couple days, decided that he was going to really go over board and ran into a couple that was trying to get out of town and were out of gas. And this email came about that particular situation. It says Officer Roeball stood by while explaining to the parties that in our municipality panhandling was prohibited. They were trying to get money for their gas. Officer Roeball explained that they were, or the parties explained to Officer Roeball that they were out of gas after spending a week in Alamosa trying to find work. They advised, they spent all their money on food and hotel rooms. After Officer Roeball received clearances and basically figured out that they were telling the truth, he agreed to fill their tank with gas out of his own pocket so that they can move on on their way back to California. I'm going to bring my glasses. Big round of applause. You want to introduce anybody? You prepping? Oh, you already got two. Yeah, go ahead. This is the fun one. All right, so repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Oliver Martinez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
And the laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado?
And of the state of Colorado.
And the char- the charter and ordinance of the City of Montevista?
And the charter and the ordinance of the City of Montevista.
And the county of Rio Grande?
And county of Rio Grande.
And that I will faithfully perform?
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of sergeant?
The duties of sergeant.
For the City of Montevista?
For the City of Montevista.
And the county of Rio Grande?
County of Rio Grande.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to change.
And upon which I am about to change.
Perfect. Yours is going to have anything to say?
I don't have anything to say, just I guess I'm proud to serve the City of Montevista. I've been here for six years, going on seven, and I'll continue to serve and protect the City of Montevista as I've done for the past few years.
So Chief, don't go too far. So we'd like to put a picture with you and the officers and then if the officers and the ones that came to support would like to just come in also, we'd love to have you.
That's an order.
You want to get in too?
Of course.
All right, we might have a tough. Let's call this one.
In a minute. Can we fit?
Can we still be in this, please?
You're good.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda this evening is a special presentation or request from Carla Schreiber and Kathy Rogers. They're here to discuss a subcommittee that's been formed to work on renovations with Saka.
Thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. I'll let Carla begin, but I'll start by just saying how we all know how important Sky High Stampede and the Sky High Stampede grounds are, including that multipurpose building that I know you guys have had many discussions over and you've done a lot of work on. And so we're here to propose something to you that we've gone before the Chamber of Commerce on, we visited with several people on, and we definitely were awaiting being able to come and visit with you about this project.
Well, thank you, Council, for letting us come before you. And we know we have a time limit, and so we will try to hurry. Tonight, our hats that we have on are Montevista City Chamber hats. Both Kathy and I wear a lot of hats, but tonight it says Montevista City Chamber. It's our belief that if with the partnership with Montevista Chamber, if should we form a committee for the revitalization of Sky High Park, we can lead and champion a committee, citizens group, to lead the effort to approve the multipurpose building of Sky High Park. You know, we all know for years, you know, we started with the bleachers and grandstands and it was supposed to go then to the multipurpose building and on and on. Well, because of some delays, it never happened. We are now thinking that it's time to move that process forward and take it to the next level.
And with the help of a lot of people, really, we believe this is the time that we can go forward and hopefully together make a big difference. That's a gem for, for Montevista and the whole San Luis Valley, and I think the uses are endless and it is used for a lot of things. So we're hoping that we can find funding and resources and begin the process with your help and with the help of many.
And we do have Linda Burnett, who is president of the chamber here, who's, the board supported that and approved formation of that committee, subject to you folks approving us to move forward as well. You know, we all know that that's a city-owned property and should you allow us to move forward that, you know, we can't just go and do whatever we want. We make recommendations to the councils should any improvements, you know, happen. So, you know, it's a partnership between the council, between the community, and all of us, because it is a, actually, it's a San Luis Valley regional complex, if you really get down to it. The whole valley uses that facility.
And we're here to hopefully be that conduit, work with you all and work on funding and other, other things to try to make it a reality. It's something that I think can really be successful and we can draw a lot of people into Montevista with. I think Montevista is just on the cusp and there are a lot of good things to come and we think that will be a help to that success.
Yeah, we, we look at that as one big puzzle and it's going to take many pieces to put that puzzle together and we think we can do that. We have, I think we have proven success on organizing and planning and implementing those types of projects here in the valley, not only in Montevista, but the valleys of Florida.
So we're here tonight to ask for your support and allow us to maybe get this ball rolling, keeping you informed and you're, under your guidance all the way. We, we have, it's a big partnership and there needs to be somebody that is willing to maybe take the time and, and organize that. And we're willing to do that, to put our time and effort into it because we love this community and, and we believe that's an important project. So that's why we're here. We don't know what you need to do next or if this is just an introduction, but we appreciate being here for you tonight.
And we have spoken with a couple stakeholders and they are in support of this project. And, you know, way back when, there had been some stakeholder meetings, so there is information out there already. It's a matter of updating that information and just taking the ball and moving forward. Again, we would appreciate your support. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Well, I, I just had a question. So we, we had worked on, where we had started a project a couple of years ago to include Sky High and being able to incorporate that as well and do improvements on that as well as, you know, hopefully the full direct center and everything. Is that, is that something that we would have in the ability with this as well to incorporate some of that? Just because I know we, we had some stakeholder meetings as well and being able to try to, you know, we, we definitely see the benefit of, of Sky High and you guys are absolutely right. It's a gem and I think it's something we need to utilize even more than what we have in in order to get more revenue, more people, you know, and use, use the heck out of that facility and make sure we're, you know, using it to the max. And I know we, for a couple of years, we've been trying to, you know, work that into the plan as well, you know, and unfortunately, those talks kind of, you know, disintegrated and, you know, we're still trying to do that. But I mean, if this is a big project, you know, I would, I would definitely propose that we include what, what we kind of started with and kind of getting our group together, maybe incorporating them with, within this group and trying to do it that way. I mean, is that something you guys are open to? Is that something that, you know, I know here with, just looking over it really quick, a couple of different chairman and having different, the user groups, I guess, as a part of the committee, is that something that you guys are open to or?
I think what we're asking for tonight is to begin the process and see what's possible and, and what components would be feasible, and that's with the participation of you and, and the other stakeholders, most definitely. I just think we're at that beginning point and we'll just see what we can accomplish. We had a get together this morning and thought, you know, it may have to come in stages depending on financing and everything else. So I think that's something yet to be determined by this group as a whole once we start the investigation process.
I don't think there's any predetermined outcomes at this moment. I think there's still a lot of information we still need to gather. Phase one.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. And like I said, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, because I know a lot of different people in the community have, you know, had their input or put in meetings, architectural studies and, you know, time and effort and being able to make sure that, you know, everyone kind of has a seat at the table and being able to help progress that, that building forward is what I'd like to see and try to be as inclusive as, as we can and, and that way we can make a decision as a whole on that. I think that should be the goal. And, you know, if you guys are open to that and having that as the, as kind of the board or the subcommittee, you know, I think that's, that's doable if we can do that.
Yeah, I think we are, are just wanting to explore everything possible and see where we can go and, and how much we can do at once and what, what should come first, and we haven't even started that process yet. So with your permission, we'll start that and we can start that whole rolling. I don't think we're opposed to anything at this moment. We're just, we're going to see what all we can do at the wishes of the stakeholders and especially you, you own the place, the City of Montevista.
So then just to clarify, I guess, so this is just a motion to pursue the committee or to, to open up a committee? And then at that point, then once the committee's formed and everything, then we'll run everything through council? So it's really just a permission to form the committee kind of thing?
And start having dialogue and, and come up with solutions and options that hopefully, you know, would be presented and you folks, you know, would have the final decision.
Certainly.
I make a motion that the Montevista City Council give their support to the two of you and your stakeholders to pursue what plans can be accomplished for that whole complex.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Council Martinez?
Aye.
Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Council Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, now is the point in our meeting where we open the floor to any citizens' comments that would like to come forward, state your name for the record. We caution you to be aware that we cannot make any formal actions or decisions on citizens' comments, and please limit your response to three minutes. Is there anybody this evening?
I'm Marco Alexander and I just want to thank the dog catcher, I call him, that drives past our street a lot and I, whatever he's doing is working. There's a lot less stray animals running around and I just wanted to say thank you.
Chief, to pass that on to you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to? All right, we'll move on to liquor license renewals. We have a liquor license renewal for the Montevista Elks Lodge at 121 Washington Street and it appears that everything's in order. Hasn't it been any issues, complaints? Wishes of council?
I move to approve liquor license for Montevista Elks Lodge number 2456 doing business at 121 Washington Street, Montevista, Colorado.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Council Schrader?
Aye.
Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Council Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. The next liquor license renewal is for the Safeway Store, Safeway Store number 46 at 1200 Second Street in Montevista. Again, everything appears to be in order and no issues?
Correct.
Wishes of council?
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license renewal for Safeway Store 46 Incorporated, 1200 Second Avenue, Montevista, Colorado.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Council Martinez?
Aye.
Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Council Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances, we have ordinance number 882, the adoption of the 2018 budget on first reading. Wishes of council?
I move to approve ordinance number 882, an ordinance adopting a budget and appropriating sums of money for the City of Montevista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2018 and ending December 31, 2018 on first reading.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Council Schrader?
Aye.
Council Lorenz?
So the other night, we had a surplus, but here we're showing that we actually have higher expenditures than income?
Yes, sir, that would be, and the other night, we didn't actually get into two funds. The, the, I think their spending would be out of fund balances in the city service water fund and the city service sewer fund, so they're not general fund expenditures.
Aye.
Sorry, Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Council Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A couple of things to add to my report and there's an item that follows on there as well. One is I did attend Coffee with a Cop again this Wednesday, so that's a month late yield. It was fairly well attended. I think we're going to outgrow the space probably by the next time we have it, so there was some good conversation. A lot of officers, well, got to stop by, but then they got called, so it was a more busy morning than it was last time. But it was still a good conversation and, and I think that's kind of a valuable tool for the chief to, you know, meet members of the community, have pretty valuable discussions. So that was, that was pretty good. I have a request from staff, well, actually from the HR department. We've been talking about holidays and holidays are always interesting. And of course, you know, we have Thanksgiving coming up and, you know, one of the issues that we have is that we have some employees work 4:10s and some that work, you know, 4:9s and then work on part of Friday. And essentially what we're going to ask is if the council would agree to close City Hall on Wednesday, the 22nd, at noon? And that would make, it would simplify the holiday schedule as far as people actually getting time off and holiday pay and all that other stuff, which is always kind of interesting. I think we've dealt with it different ways before, but that would be the request of the council is if we can close on noon that day. That doesn't work on Christmas this year because Christmas Eve is actually celebrated on Friday and Christmas on Monday, so that's pretty simple. We have Veterans Day coming up next week. We've kind of resolved issues around that. Of course, the parade is on Veterans Day holiday this year, but kind of got that all figured out. So that would be a request I'd like to make of the council tonight. And then a reminder, of course, you all passed, thank you for passing the ordinance on first reading for the budget. We got a budget workshop on Monday, the 13th, at 6:30 PM. And then one other item, you know, council requested, we brought, I brought to council a request for a land donation and then council requested that we talk to the Community Garden Group and Jim's here tonight somewhere and Raina and, so basically we had that discussion and they were very much interested in that parcel. So if the council is in agreement with that, then we'll work with the city attorney to move forward on that transaction. They were pretty excited about it, had a good conversation with Mr. Postman about it. So those are the things I have. The two action items would be the holiday and then if you wish to go ahead with the land donation, then I'll work with Karen and we'll get that.
Wishes of council on the request for a Wednesday noon closing prior to Thanksgiving?
I just have one request. Just make sure that we do everything we can to get that out to the vote.
We will, if you all approve that, we'll, yeah, we'll hit all of our outlets for that.
I move to approve the closing of City Hall Wednesday before Thanksgiving?
At noon.
At noon.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Council Schrader?
Aye.
Council Martinez?
Aye.
Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, next action item was the wishes of the council to engage the city attorney in discussions on the land transfer with the Community Garden.
I move to, or?
Well, just to clarify, the land transfer is coming from?
From Elaine Duran?
Okay.
Or, actually, sorry, from Nora Duran. Elaine is her attorney at the house. So from Nora Duran to the City of Montevista and then we just make arrangements for the Community Garden to use it.
I move that we authorize the city attorney to move forward with the land transaction from, was it Karen Duran?
Nora Duran, sorry.
Nora Duran to the City of Montevista.
Second. Any other discussion? Nita? Council Martinez?
Aye.
Council Lorenz?
Aye.
Council Schrader?
Aye.
Council Schreiber?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The city attorney's report, I, I put you out of order.
Good evening, everyone. This is actually not my usual night, but I wanted to just update you on the judge situation. I spoke with Judge Zollers this morning and she filled me in on her activities. She's met with Nita and with Rebecca, has reviewed files. She's set court next week, I believe, for two days and she's going to make a more formal report to the council in two weeks' time, but I just wanted to keep you updated because I know this is a pretty important issue also for the community as well. And then I got a text from her tonight and she said she reached out, or perhaps the ACLU folks who were doing the investigation that prompted this article, reached out to her. They said they were very impressed with the proactive stance that the City of Montevista has taken with respect to this issue. They're only looking for change. They're not interested in pursuing any litigation against the city or recommending that. So I thought that that was a very positive development and I wanted to report that to the council and to the public at large. Any questions?
So are we, are we still going to continue then with the investiga-, is that what Judge Zollers is going to come report back to us in a couple of weeks, huh? Okay.
Yeah, she's going to actually conduct court and, you know, the term investigation is interesting. I'm, I'm going to allow her to explain to you what Um, I'm going to allow her to explain to you, uh, what she's actually found and what she's done to correct or implement changes to ensure that all of our procedures are on the very right side of any, any law. And I didn't get into that with her today, because I only spoke with her very briefly, but she's, she's on it, so. There'll be a further report. Anything else?
Well, to kind of just tag along on that, I actually happened to run into Judge Solers today as well, so. But she, in that, she would like to sit down with council and just discuss some of her observations and recommendations thus far. And so she was actually requesting if maybe perhaps we could set a work session to visit with her and discuss. So, yeah, in, in kind of a report of just things that she's recommending we change or do, or I think she's noticed.
That would be great. Do you, would you like me to spearhead that?
Um, yeah, if you would like to coordinate with her a day that works for, with her schedule and maybe give us some options.
Absolutely, I will do that. I'll, I'll check in with her tomorrow. I know she doesn't have court. Hopefully I can get ahold of her and then coordinate with everybody by email, if that's okay? All right, great. Thank you.
And we have our RFP out too for the...
Yes, we do.
Yeah, some of, just in, like I say, brief discussion, she just would like to maybe see some policy change prior to bringing in a new judge, so that it's not a, a bigger transition for them as well.
And I think she'll have those, those items listed out. This, these are just verbal conversations. I'm sure she's going to put something in writing, but I just wanted to make sure that you were kept, because I, she's not my direct report. She's your direct report, but I kind of feel like it's an issue that there's, it does bleed over into my responsibility, ensuring that the city is protected as much as it can be from any further exposure vis a vis this issue. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kids Connection report.
Um, so Kids Connection's been as busy as we can be with number-ending kids running around. Membership numbers right now are over 200 members enrolled since June. Those numbers will continue to climb January through May, um, at the end of the school year, and then we start, we start a process all over again. We just wrapped up our first annual poker tournament with Three Guys Farms at the Montevilla this past Saturday. We had about 18 participants that played. We had some staff members have to jump in and fill seats, because the turnout wasn't as good as we, well, it was good, because it was the first one, but it wasn't what we were hoping for. But we had a lot of fun in doing it, I think. Alex is back there somewhere. It was a lot of fun, and those that participated were really excited and asking for the next one. Some of them had mentioned, like, you should, you guys should do this, like, every couple of months, and I'm looking, I'm like, no, let's stick to maybe once a year, maybe, we might go a little crazy and do two if, I don't know how, how excited Alex is about that, I'm sure I can talk him into it. We raffled off some cool door prizes that were donated by Southern Colorado Computer Services and, um, Napa's Auto. Um, we had an amazing meal provided, provided by Three Guys Farms. The meal in the middle of everything was, for me, because I was just kind of watching and overseeing, everything was the greatest part, so. We finished the turnarout, the tournament around 4:00 PM with our final three contestants. Um, there's an article in the Montavista Journal kind of detailing everything, and it looks, at this point, it looks like we are really, really close to, um, our overall goal. And I know that the Facebook, uh, event site, or the fundraiser, is still open for a couple more weeks, right, Alex?
Till before 10:00.
Yeah, um, to kind of keep pushing it out there and see if we can actually hit that goal. It was a pretty big goal to reach for our very first one, but we're, we're almost there, so keep sharing it on Facebook and getting it out there as much as possible, so we can try to reach it. With that, I am working on some thank yous. I took, like, a thousand pictures. I'm going through all the pictures and trying to compile them into some thank you cards for the sponsors and for those that participated, so hopefully those can get out by the end of next week. I should be pretty close to getting those pushed out. Um, let's see, we are, for the month of November, first thing we have going on is the Veterans Parade. We will hopefully be walking with a pretty good group of kids through the parade. I've gotten a couple signed up, so hopefully over the next week, that will kind of start to expand, um, but we do plan on walking through the parade to show our support. In November, we are going to continue our Thanksgiving feast. It was put on hold last year because we had that big transition move, so we weren't able to do it, um, but we're going to go ahead and bring the feast back at this, again this year, and I've already gotten three turkeys donated. So I'll be sending out some donation letters for parents to see if we can get the full meal provided, and I can volunteer my family to cook for us. That's their favorite part of it. That meal will take place on November 22nd, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, from 12 o'clock to 1:00, so it's actual perfect timing with City Hall closing. Um, City Hall employees can come enjoy a meal with our Kids Connection kids, and City Council, of course, is welcome to come, um, as well as families of our members. And then, other than that, December 1st, we will be hosting, um, the weekend of the Holiday Festival, we'll be hosting a Pancake Breakfast with Santa Friday, December 1st. And then on Saturday, we will do, be doing Santa's workshop, and then we will host Cookies with Santa at Kids Connection after the parade. So we're trying to stay very busy that weekend. And other than that, with all of the events we have going on and just hanging out with the kids, we've been pretty busy, so I don't have much else to, to give you guys. You have any questions? Thank you.
Recreation report.
Good evening. Uh, first, I'd like to apologize for not being here for the last meeting on the budget report, but we were out in Denver for training or clinic on youth prevention. And then I guess the last meeting that we had also on, to keep my report, I had to miss because I had volleyball going on, and so I had missed it twice, but, like, I was, I want to keep my report, I always keep my report simple, but to the point. And I like to start with the PWE programs. We finished with football and volleyball, uh, and started right, right away with girls' basketball season. That started in, let me see. Pre-issues were open in September, uh, and we're actually about to finish the girls' basketball season now in November. We had three, third and fourth grade teams and three, uh, three, uh, fifth and sixth grade teams, and we also had three, uh, pre-K and K, uh, teams. And the pre-K and K, we are the only ones that host that age group. We figure the, as soon as we get them going, the better they'll get by the time they get to third and fifth. But, uh, we also invite other, you know, other cities to get those groups together, and maybe we get a chance to play them, but they say it's too hard. So, but we enjoy it. Right now, the registrations for boys' basketball season are already open. We open it on the 1st, and it'll go, it'll be open all the way to November 30th, uh, so we should leave it open for a whole month, uh, to try to get as many as we can. And, um, so we will start those games, uh, the beginning of next year. Well, we'll probably start practicing maybe the middle of December. That's our, our, our plan to start on practices at that time. As far as the doll programs, uh, we restarted the volleyball, uh, doll volleyball, uh, that runs Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we usually, we usually go from 6 to 9 o'clock. We host about three games every, every day, the Tuesday and Thursday. We, uh, we had total five teams, and each team, you can probably find 10 to 12, uh, you know, people playing on that team, and it's coed, so. I have some ideas for next year, uh, suggestions from the players, that maybe we can turn it into, instead of six volleyball teams, do four, maybe we get more teams that way, and so we're going to try that next year, but at least we got that going, and I think that's something that we keep going year by year. Still working with the pickleball, um, to start now in the wintertime here at the Sky High. We're still kind of debating whether we have it at the multipurpose room or at the gym area, being that the surface is a little more, has a little more grip for, for them, so we're thinking maybe the, the basketball area will do that. I was glad to hear that they were thinking about putting the community together. I've been waiting for that. Been waiting for that. As far as community events, uh, we, I've been, uh, my department's been working hard with, along with CTC, Communities That Care. I think that is a program that, you know, we kind of, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Working together, I think we've...
Compliment.
A compliment, yeah, compliment the same goals that we, that I, that I have in my mind, and that's preventing, you know? I think what we do, what we focus by having the kids out there and, and programs is preventing them from other things, keeping them away from other things. And working with CTC, um, it just makes us stronger. And so I'm working hard with them. We're working really hard to, to get this going, and, uh, and we're going to have another family skate night, uh, at the Sky High this Saturday, so I open, open invitation to everybody. We charging a dollar for kid and $2 for adults, uh, entry fee. You don't have to skate, you just go for the fun. If you guys go, you know, check it out, I promise I won't charge you, just like to see you there. But, uh, you know, last time we had close to 50-plus people there. I would say that probably 70 of, 70% of that were kids, and, uh, I would say probably 60 were skating, 60% were skating. So I think it was going to turn out. They're the ones that requested to do it more often. They want to do it once, uh, once every month, but I told them, let's try it once every two months and see how that goes, but if, we're expecting double this time. So hopefully we, we can multiply those numbers. Again, it's, uh, Saturday, October 4th, from 6 to 9 at Sky High. We're also getting ready for the Christmas Fest, uh, that'll be December 1st and 2nd. We are planning on the ugly sweater dodgeball, uh, tournament over at the Sky High, and that's coed. And I, I think the last time, what we did was just, uh, we charged per player instead of doing it per team, so we're going to keep it the same thing. And one of the plans that we're doing is that we work in conjunction with, uh, the PD and, um, what was the other one?
For the charity?
Yes, um, so what we're doing is doing the players' fee, but we, uh, we are, if they bring a, some food, uh, those cans of food, or clothing, or anything that we can provide to families in need, or to the PD for their toy drive, or whatever they do there, then we can add some, most percentage of the, the fees. And so we, we working together to get that accomplished, and, and hopefully get enough, enough, uh, enough stuff to, uh, you know, help out, uh, families in need. Also, uh, I had a, I went to the meeting with the theater about, because we also try to provide a movie for, for that night, um, for the community, and I went and talked to them to see what would be the chances of us having it at the, at the movie theater, and how we can arrange that, because it's more of a donation. We're not charging, it's like a donation that they do for the movie. And so they're looking into that and see how we can fit it in there, and, and how much we have to pay for the movie, if we have to pay it, or they say maybe they can just donate that to us, so that'll be, as soon as they can do that. And as soon as I hear from that, I'll let you guys know. Moving on to the Sky High and the parks, uh, rentals. At Sky High, it's been kind of slow this month. We've been having practices with the volleyball, well, we had practice with volleyball, now it's basketball, and the cheerleading program. We have the commodities there, uh, pickleball on the weekends, like Sundays, I believe that's when they're doing them, and then we have the outdoor gun show just last weekend. And then on the 31st, we have the Rattover Fest there, so, uh, still, you know, still in use, but kind of slow this, this month. As far as the parks, we haven't had very many reservations there. Only had one in October 14th, and that's about it, but, you know, I think this is getting too cold. And other than that, we're just, you know, trying to attend meetings, as much meetings as we can, trying to get involved with the community and, uh, many aspects, not just recreation, but, uh, anything that we can do, um, uh, as a city, you know, to work together, uh, and try to get involved as much as possible. And I see a lot of youth, young youth to go on here, so I want to open the invitation for them. If you ever want to help out with PWE programs, I mean, a lot of volunteers, just come and see me, all right? I don't know if you guys have any questions, concerns, you know, work with me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Council reports. Jason?
Nothing.
Carol?
The only thing I would remind people of, the Veterans Parade on Friday, the 10th, there's a parade uptown, and then ending at the Veterans Park for further celebration of Veterans Day, and then on Saturday is the Fireman's Annual Chili Dinner, starting at 4 till 7:30.
Thank you.
I just attended the charity poker tournament. I thought it was really well-conducted, and although I did get taken for all my money, but I really, uh, not, not too bad. I think it's a great event, and being able to capitalize on little niche events like that, and being able to do things like that to unite the community, I think is really beneficial, and, uh, thanks to Three Guys Farms for hosting that, and, um, I think it's extremely beneficial, and we'll see, we'll see next year. I'll save up my money and see what we can get next year. That's it.
Thank you. Carol?
Well, I'd just like to say that I think it's been pretty incredible tonight, just seeing how the community's been coming together. I mean, Chief, just hats off to your men. I mean, that story's about as incredible as it gets, and I, I just can't say enough about that. I mean, what, Kids Connection, Poker Tournament, all the community members, business people coming together for that, that was absolutely incredible. And I just, I, I continue seeing that coming out of the community, and I can't express my appreciation enough. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, so on Monday, I was invited over to the high school to judge patriotic art poster contest, and I was amazed at how talented, um, our students are. It's, it was a hard decision, and, um, so I requested to have all the posters put on display at our Veterans Tribute on Friday, November 11th. So we will have all the artwork from the high school there, and then, um, I'm going to also have it displayed on a building there on the main Highway 160. If you don't catch it at the Veterans Tribute, you can see it in a storefront, so. Please take some time to come out and look at that and enjoy that. Along with some other activities going on this weekend, of course, I may mention the, the skate night next Saturday, the following Saturday, November 11th, the roller derby will be out at Sky High, and then, um, we'll be moving on to the Holiday Festival first weekend in December, so we look forward to getting that information out. It's going to be a little different this year, so, uh, stay tuned, and we'll get all the maps and information out on, on the changes. And lastly, I just want to pass this along to everybody. If you weren't at the last council meeting, the Historical Society needed some assistance in getting a new awning for their building, so we made a donation to help them, and they have a thank you card for you guys, so you can pass that around. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn until, what are we?
Resisting?
Oh, yes, we're in, no, we're in adjournment. This is the last meeting.
First meeting.
I'm trying, get out of here. Okay, we're in recess until Thursday, November 16th at 6:00 PM.